But we just feel like if we do this, this is the right thing to do. It is long-term work, so we have to be committed to the long term. You know, John and I were just talking before the meeting about Kingsborough. That was foresight over 20 years ago from our board commissioners. That's the kind of work we have to be willing to do, that future forward work. I know you can't see that, it's really not intended for you to see, but just wanted you to see. The concept is, we're identifying everybody that's doing work in each of those four focus areas. We want to know who they are, what they do, how we can help them, how they can all work together. So every day, just about, we learn of new organizations that are doing work in these four focus areas. When we talk about building out that support framework, that includes all of these, it includes particularly these factors. And that being performance management, leadership development, capacity building, networking and collaboration, policy development, and the two more recent ones that we've had has been transportation and marketing and communication. In our many meetings that we've had, that's come up over and over again, that people just don't know enough about the resources that are already out there. So we need to do a better job of publicizing and helping people become aware of what we're doing. And then that, next to the last one there, is transportation. That word has just been hovering over my head probably for the last year. Because it has just become more and more apparent to me that that is a barrier in just about everything that we do. You know, most of you have been doing the work that you do in your positions of leadership for a long time. And we talk about transportation as a barrier all the time. And I particularly feel like we really need to put some attention to solving that problem. Because I feel like we can do all of these other things, and if we don't fix that, we can only get so far. You can have the right programs, the right resources, the right opportunity, and if people can't get to it, it's pointless for those who need it the most. And you know how it goes, it's like, you know, the chicken or the egg. I need a job to get a car, but I need a car to get the job. Or, you know, I'd love to go to the community college, but I gotta get there, and I don't have a consistent ride, and it's gonna cost me too much to pay some money. All of those things, we have got to figure that out. So, you know, that's something we talked a lot about at our retreat, and we talked about it internally a lot, as well as with our advisory boards we're getting off the list. But just want to elevate that. I don't, I don't know what the solution is for that, I just know we've got to fix that. That's all I know, we gotta fix it. But I believe that together, we can figure out how to fix that. We have some ideas, we're working on those ideas, but we really have to fix that. We have created this task force structure to help us to do this getting off the list work. And it's not just the county that's doing this, obviously, we've started this initiative, we're raising this banner, but it is a structure of a whole lot of partners that have come together to help us to do this long-term work. Our board commissioners have, you know, they believe in this, and they've committed to this. And one of the things they've done, they've created four advisory boards, one for each of the four focus areas. Great for to have Dr. Brian on our youth and families advisory board, and I think some of the others are on some of those boards, and thank you for that. Below those four advisory boards, there are 12 seats on each of those advisory boards. But then below that is the larger, what we call, community groups. And they are people who are interested in one or more of those focus areas that we convene at least twice a year, so we can check in, make sure that we're doing the right things and going in the right direction. We just recently had a series of those meetings back in February. So our advisory boards, they've been appointed, they've been meeting, they've had several meetings. And one of the things they've been working on is selecting priorities in their focus area. Again, I won't show you all of the priorities from all of the advisory boards, but at least I want to show you that for education and workforce. You'll see that one priority that the education and workforce advisory board selected is increasing access and affordability for educational and training opportunities by removing barriers. Simple, straightforward, a lot of people already doing that work. We need to partner with them and help them to do more of that good work. That is, to help people get more access. Because really, if you look across the landscape, and what we have found, that there are lots of resources, there are lots of opportunities, there's lots of training, you know, between school system, community college, nonprofit partners. We just need to connect more people with those available resources. I'll also show you under youth and family supports, the two priorities that that advisory board selected is increasing availability, affordability, and quality of early childhood education in our community, and increasing access to supports to basic family needs like housing and food, and home environment needs like parenting skills and emotional support. And again, I just want to stress that in selecting these priorities, the advisory boards are not necessarily saying, "We need to go create another program to meet these, you know, under these priorities." It's, we need to identify who's already doing work in these areas and list it for them, so they can just do more of the good work that they're already doing. So the next steps for our, for getting off the list is now our advisory boards will start convening again to develop strategies for those priorities. We are going to start aligning and mobilizing resources so that we can create that support framework that I mentioned we're gonna select. And we're also gonna select performance benchmarks, so that we can make sure that we are moving in the right direction. So we've made some moves internally within our organization to better align with our getting off the list initiative. One of those things is that we have aligned our discretionary funding with getting off the list initiative. This will be our second year of doing this. And basically, any of our discretionary funding for outside agencies, like what we provide for the school system, that's not discretionary, that's a requirement. But any discretionary funding, we've now put out a request for proposals in any organization, nonprofit, local government unit that wants to submit for funding, they have to show how, what they plan to do connects with getting off the list. This is a picture of grantees that were awarded last year, last fall. And you probably know some of those folks, an array of different organizations, like the Boys and Girls Club, Allies Partnership for Children, Turning Point Workforce Development, and some others. So we're grateful to be able to better align our discretionary funding with our getting off the list initiative. I've shown you this, these slides before, but I want to remind you of two of the efforts that's come out of this getting off the list initiative is, first, our Edgecombe Works Promise Program, that's a partnership with Edgecombe Community College, where the county has invested funds to create this scholarship program. And so it is administered through the community college. Last year, we invested $75,000 and it went fast. It was very popular, very much needed. This year, we went up a little bit on that, it's $110,000 we have in that, and they're close to spending all of those funds now. So a person can apply, they have to apply for Pell Grant if they're in a program that qualifies, or other grants and scholarships, because this is intended to help fill financial gaps. And so they can get, depending on the length of the program, they can get up to $1,000 per semester. And it is built in such a way that it will first pay tuition books and fees, and there is money left over that goes directly to them to help them cover some out-of-pocket expenses with attending classes. And so again, that's been a great partnership with the community college. I want to say thank you to our board again for being willing to invest in that and then reinvest in that this year. So I would encourage you, any of your students, particularly those that are, you know, getting ready to graduate and they're thinking about going to the community college, they can reach out to the folks there and apply for that scholarship. Also, our career navigator position that we created here in the county, the goal was to help overcome that high unemployment list. And so Ms. Tracy Clay, who's our career navigator, her job is every day to go out and find unemployed Edgecombe County residents and to engage with them and help them to overcome their barriers. And really, the concept is to essentially hold their hand and walk them through the maze of resources and opportunities. Because even though there are lots of resources and opportunities for some, they don't know where to start, they don't know what to do next, it's intimidating, and they need help, and that's what she does. So she's been building up her client base on that, and she's doing a great job. Now, you know, we've not sent 100 people to work with her, through her position, because she's working with the hardest cases. She's working with folks that have kids at home, no transportation, haven't worked in 10 years, don't even have a high school diploma, and those kinds of things. So, you know, it's baby steps, a lot of them, she's helping them through. But I believe that over time, we're really gonna see. She does have some clients that have gone to work, some have gone and gotten certification. But again, I would encourage you to please refer people to her, especially if you have graduating seniors and they have no idea what they're gonna do, and you feel like they really need help, they need that handholding, please refer them to her. Because you see, when they leave school, and if they graduate, they don't go to college, don't go to community college, and don't go to work, guess what? They're adding to that unemployment list, right? So please see her as a resource. Outside of getting off the list, we've been working really hard to build the capacity of our organization. To build our organization, we have to build our team, right? We are the organization, so we have to build our team. For a couple of years now, we have laid out what we call our organizational action plan. And these are some things that we've been working on. And that includes leadership development, positive employee experiences, efficient operations, financial stability, and managing critical issues. We've got a whole plan behind this, and individual strategies and accomplishments, some things we're still working on, but we've been keeping this in front of us. This sort of back office stuff for our organization that we've been working on, just to make sure that we're growing as an organization to meet the needs of our citizens. We need to be the organization that our citizens need and deserve. Our citizens, we are here, we exist to serve them, and we need to make sure we have the capacity to serve them well. And so we have to work on that every single day and get better and better. As an example, you'll see in that vision statement that I showed you earlier, this is the side of the vision statement that faces inward towards us. And you'll see there, it says, "Edgecombe County values its employees." And we were sitting around my conference room table one day, and I thought about it, I said, "Wait a minute, we can't do any of the rest of this stuff that's in that vision statement until we better value our employees." And so we started there. So some of the things that we're doing, we've captured it like this. We're striving to compensate our staff as well as we can, train them as best as we can, encourage them as often as we can, recognize them as publicly as we can, and care about them as sincerely as we can. And that might seem like, "Oh, okay, you just roll out of bed and do that." You know, we have to be purposeful in doing that. And we're very purposeful, we're listing things we're striving to do, we're listing things we've already done. You know, as an example, there are lots of things, but just a few examples. We have been chipping away every year with trying to improve our compensation plan. We can't just overnight say, "All right, everybody, we're gonna, I'm tired of hearing you talking about how much Wilson County, Nash County, and Pitt County, so we're just gonna pay everybody what Wilson, Pitt, and Nash County." We can't do that. But what we can do is do as much as we can and try to do a little bit better every year. So we, you know, we've done some things, we've done at least a whole, and some years are very small, with every year, since 2015, we've increased our minimum salary, we've increased our part-time wage, expanded what we call our credential incentives. In some position, they get a credential that takes them rigor in time to get, they can get an increase, extraordinary pay, remote work opportunities. We overhaul our compensation plan a couple of years ago, we've been phasing that out, we've done phase one and phase two. One position, and only one position in the county, that we do a sign-on and retention bonus, and that is child welfare social worker position. We have 14 positions in DSS for that, and at one time, we have four. And those are the ones that go out, and they get a call saying, "I think that kid across the street is being neglected or abused." And they go out and see, are they being neglected and abused? It's a super important position. And we had four when we were supposed to have 14. And we said, "We gotta do something about it." And again, I'm grateful for the commissioners being willing for us to step out and do something we've never done before, so we do a sign-on and retention bonus for that position. And then we're still working on some other things. We're looking at phase three of our compensation plan, we're doing an informal market study right now. Hopefully, we'll be able to take another step towards closing that gap between us and the market. And we're also working on trying to create and promote more opportunities for career pathways within our organizational structure. Just a few examples of some things that we're doing to create positive experiences for our employees. We had our very first employee appreciation day last summer. And I think those that attended enjoyed it, we plan to do it again. That's a picture of our service award there at the top right. The bottom right, that is our first, we're working with the community college to create a training program for our staff, it's called the Edgecombe Works, Edgecombe Works, what is it called? Academy, that's it. So that is the Edgecombe Works Office Academy. So folks who work in an office setting, wanna get some skill up. As y'all know, the academy model in the community college, they stack credentials. If it's at least 96 hours, they get an academy certificate. So our first round, I think we had maybe 21 of our staff to participate. We just are finishing up the second round of that now. We also have now what's called the Edgecombe Works Hands-On Skills Academy. And that's for folks that are in a position with us to have hands-on jobs, and they're learning to up their skills, and so they're going through that now. And we do other things, veterans luncheon, we have March Madness and Christmas decorate. And I'm gonna tell you what, some of these offices get real serious about Christmas and Christmas. I'm like, "You left nothing for your house when you get done." See, that's the top right register of these offices, now they really go out. You see why they go, and they go all out. But all kinds of things that we're doing to just try to give better experiences. So what we're seeing, not just in our organization, but in the county, I don't know if y'all see, but they should see here, I hope you, hopefully you feel it. There is momentum building in Edgecombe County. Y'all feel it? I've been feeling it. I hope it's not, you know, I eat too much. I did get two bowls of that salad. Momentum is building in Edgecombe County. I, everything is in me, I believe that we are not gonna be the same county in five years, 10 years from now. I believe that. Momentum is building. I heard somebody say that building momentum is like launching a rocket. And you know, if you're watching, you know, now they launch a rocket about every other week, so you can watch it all the time. But you know how when they hit that button, they count down, five, four, three, two, one, zero, three, flash off, and they hit that button? And when they first hit that button, it's a whole lot of fire and smoke, and nothing's happened. It looks like it's not even gonna make it off the launch pad. But they keep pouring that power to it, and eventually, it picks up, it picks up, it picks up, and next thing you know, that thing is moving on its own momentum. We're at the stage now, for those who are kind of looking from a distance, it's like, you know, I keep hearing Eric talking about getting off the list, and commissioners are posting about these programs we're doing, and the school system's doing that, but I'm looking, I don't even see that rocket lifting off its launch. It is launching, it's getting ready to do that. It's launching, and I believe that we got, we can't stop, all right? We can't sit back and say, "You know what, we've been doing all of this, we've been talking about getting off the list for two years, and it looks like nothing." We can't do that. Now, other people watching from the outside, not y'all. But other people from the outside looking in, they can do that, we can't do that, right? We gotta believe that we keep pushing, that y'all are gonna have the best school system in the whole state, and we're telling them that your graduation rate is gonna be out the roof, and that you're gonna have all of your positions filled, ready for day one of class, right, Dr. Brian? That's the moment, that is the moment. But we gotta believe that we're building that momentum. So, you know, just some things, I think it's evidence of that, everybody knows about Natron Energy's announcement, big announcement, I was sharing it earlier, that it's sort of like you fishing, you got the fish right up to the boat, and they trying to heist that fish into the boat. That's where we are with Natron, we hope to get it in the boat very soon. Amazon, relatively small project, won't hire a whole bunch of people, but that is a huge name. Just having a sign off the bypass that says, "Amazon," is huge for Edgecombe County and the town of Tarpon. Building momentum. This couple right here, they came, they're from Riley, they've been doing some, they are housing developers, real estate developers, they've been doing work in Riley for a long time, then a few years ago, they started doing some work in the city of Black Mountain. They reached out to me a little over a year ago and said, "We'd love to do some work on this side of the county, got anything we can look at?" I said, "Well, we got this old DSS Health Department campus north Main Street." I was thinking they want to potentially buy it and tear the buildings down and build something new. They looked at it and said, "We love it," because it is a beautiful campus. They said, "We want it, and we're not gonna tear those buildings down. We're gonna, we're gonna repurpose and renovate those buildings." So we closed on that, I don't know, a couple of months ago or so. They are now the owners of our former DSS Health Department campus, and that is a picture of a concept that they have for repurposing, renovating those buildings to create what they hope up to 60 apartment units, market rate apartment units. And so momentum is built. We've got other interests in housing development in Edgecombe County like I have not seen in the 23 years that I've been here. Big-scale housing development. And these are outside investors looking to come in this county and invest in housing here. Momentum is built. We're super proud of the fact that Moody's rating recently increased our rating from a single A to a double A. That came from a lot of hard work, I got, you see Linda's picture of that?
Yeah, look at my girl.
She went in these articles, but I made sure I dropped her picture up there. You know, it's an organizational effort, but she and her team are the tip of the spear as it relates to that. And that's a big deal, that is a really big deal for Edgecombe County. That's not something we take overnight, it took a long time to get to that point. That's a big deal. As you probably know, we're building an animal shelter on, like, Sheriff's Park was there, on Anacar Road, super excited about that. Concrete was poured a couple of weeks ago, we expect that steel to probably start going up within the next two or three weeks. That's a big deal. Another thing we're very pleased with is our opioid settlement program. You probably know counties across the state, really across the country, but across the state, we get funds through opioid settlement from drug manufacturers and pharmacies that, you know, sue and they settle. And we're getting funding every year for about 18 years. And we have to use those funds to initiate programs to help people to address that issue for themselves. And so our team did a really good job of coming up with an approach. Well, we have two community paramedics, you may have seen those two trucks around the community. And what they do is, when they find out someone has overdosed, as soon as they get back home, well, they can catch them before they get back home, they engage with them to help them get connected, service them. And so I showed that picture of the top left, the gentleman on the left in the picture, that's Dalton Barrett, he's the supervisor for our community paramedic program. And there's some meeting in Riley, he gets invited all over the state to talk about the program, because other counties want to model their program like ours. I wish I could say it was my idea, but it was not mine. It was their idea, it was a team with them, I just said, "Go for it." And they're doing a great job. Oh, that picture at the bottom, that's not a soda machine, that is a Narcan dispenser that is out at the, out at our detention center. Because there are people that come in with addiction, and they leave with addiction. If somebody doesn't intervene, they're probably gonna go home and overdose. And so they get to get that Narcan for free. You can buy it in stores, they can get it through, paid for by the program. Edgecombe Works Career Camp. Y'all familiar with this building? Because when we were talking about Cataline merger, y'all would look at that possibly using for temporary high school, and it had other plans. Well, through a partnership with the community college and repurposing of some state grant funds, we have purchased that building, and we've been working on doing some renovations to the building, it's in relative good shape. And that's the new sign, that sign just went up a couple of weeks ago, and it's called Edgecombe Works Career Campus. The goal of that building is that we want to make it a high-tech facility that becomes a tool to help train our folks to get the jobs that they need. We want to complement and supplement what already exists, we don't want to overlap. But it is not for us to use, we will own it, we'll make sure that it's kept up. But it is for you all to use as you need, the community college and our other partners. So that's, we're moving along with that project as well. But most importantly, as I said at the beginning, and this is one of my favorite meetings, because we're just pleased to be good partners with you all. We're happy to be able to work so closely with you all. And we made it through that transition, Cataline merger. That was tough work, that was long work. That picture at the bottom right, that was one of those design team meetings. I don't remember how long ago that was, a long time ago. That picture at the top left, that's Dr. Brian, doing a fantastic job. I believe it might have been DS Johnson up there, I can't remember, one of the community meetings. It was a long process to make that transition. And of course, y'all know, last year at this time, you know, or last fall, we officially made the transition. And I know there's still ongoing work for you all accommodating those students coming, but I just want to thank you all for welcoming those students and doing such a fantastic job of making them feel right at home in Edgecombe County's school system. So we're better together between the county and the school system, between the Cataline merger, parks and recreation. I want to pause right there, I want to ask Kelvin to stand up. I want to give him credit. He is our, we just created a position about a year ago. Yesterday was his one-year anniversary, he's doing a great job. He is our first Parks and Recreation Director. And what I have learned, and Dr. Brian, you probably do this much better than I do, I have learned that I need to hear their ideas, let it settle on me a little bit, and then get out of their way and support it, right? And Kelvin is full of great ideas, and one of those ideas, and he's been working with you directly, Dr. Brian, and your team, and that is creating the very first in Edgecombe school system, the elementary basketball league. That is great. You all have approved it, we've approved it, we have agreed to put some seat money in it for some equipment and uniforms and things. And, you know, that was, that was an idea that Kelvin had, and that idea just grew. And he's got lots of other ideas, so just wait. But I just wanted to recognize him here and thank him for that good work. And thank you all for being, you know, willing to bring it, I think that's gonna be fantastic. The sound that might seem like a small thing, that's a big deal, I think. That is a really big deal. I believe it is for you all, but it is for us as well, so thank Kelvin for his belief. I mentioned the career campus, we got a really big, exciting project on the horizon, that is the work there, the capital project on North Edgecombe High School campus. And we're just in some preliminary conversations, Dr. Brian and I have been talking about this, and that is working together to see if we can help create some opportunities for housing of teachers and young professionals. That's, that's been something that these two boards have been talking about for years. And, you know, it's one of those things that we get busy, but we, that idea has reemerged, and we're moving forward with it, and Dr. Brian's got some great ideas, and I look forward to working with him on that. But anyway, I feel like that was longer than I intended for it to be. Clay, I'm happy to answer any questions if you have to.
You gotta have to.
I got to have to. Well, thank you all so much, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you.
Very dear.
Thank you so much. What we, we believe the questions that they had of schools were a big help.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and I echo what Devin said. It's about partnership and wanting to be helpful. Something that I truly appreciate about our two boards, the work that I've been able to see this before and after, I've been here, and everyone trying to work together, not to improve our individual organizations, but to improve our community. And at the end of the day, that's what it's about. So tonight, as our joint meeting, I'll present to you a draft, and I use that word, a draft, budget presentation for you tonight, that will take a few things into consideration. One, try to provide you some rationale and an update on where we are at the school district, to support the local current expense request, and also to support the capital request. We're talking a number of things as we work through the presentation tonight. Also want to make sure I try to keep it free from tip points, so that we have room for questions for anybody asking about. Obviously, as Mr. Evans noted, we've had a pretty exciting Obviously, as Mr. Evans noted, we've had a pretty exciting year with transitions and everything that we've all been, you know, trying to make sure, first of all, that our virtue of our schools and students, communities, and people now are preferred and are first successful. I think we had a really, a pretty good transition. As we said all along, going back in the last year and the year before, we knew it wouldn't be perfect, but I think we filled enough things in place and a lot of supporting in place to make sure it was successful. We created something that we've been going on. I'm very excited about that. As we were entering into the merger in the fall of last year, we installed, we also received the New Town and Needs Base Grant from the state of Carolina to support reconfiguring the north side of our county, and build that pre-K-12 new facility. Our work at gun on that, our architects are all working on the design. That'll probably take up to a year or one less than a year to get that done. But under some guidelines, we're very excited to get that, to get that moving. Our school year certainly has been used to try to focus on improving our numbers. I think Mr. Evans hit upon this. At the end of the day, it's about working together, trying to improve outcomes and opportunities for our students. And that's what we should be about, and that's what we are about. And we want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help our students be successful. Mr. Evans was talking about students graduating from high school, a really important factor for all of us. What happens to those students when they graduate, when they stay in their community or they go out into the world? We want them to be successful. So number one, they need to be able to graduate. More, even more importantly, I believe, the conversation should not be about graduating from high school. It should be about what our student graduating from high school will, to make sure that's accepted. And as I noted in the booklet that you have in front of you, our graduation rate, going back to class of twenty-three, was seventy-six point eight percent. This past June, class of twenty-four, seventy-eight point eight percent. We tried, worked really hard this year to create a system that will support students, help them graduate from high school, and take advantage of the opportunity that our school did. We're trying to do the same thing again, as we look into the next year and beyond. As all you probably already know, graduation rates are determined by a number of students who enter in ninth grade and graduate fourth grade. There's also a five-year number that's in there as well, but we put a lot of focus on that four-year graduation cohort. And that's the number we're trying to move. Trying to graduate from high school, and as I said, graduating is something that is of value for what they've done in the four years that they've done. We're working on a lot of things to try to change that competition for students, and make sure that they're eating that cohort. One of the goals that we talk about a lot, the graduation rate, as administrators through our school district, is that graduation rate is not a high school number. Graduation rate is a system number. It is a pre-K-12 system number. That's why we spend a lot of our time talking about literacy. And literacy, particularly at the pre-K read level, what we're trying to do to make sure students can read and read equitably. And we have a lot of work to do with that. But some of the work we've put in place already talks about core phonics programs, coaching for teachers, letter programs, provided by state of Carolina, and a lot of other things to try to make that difference at pre-K grade. Throughout this year, and even more heavily going into next year, our focus is going to be on comprehension and the ability to build, going from transitioning from that third grade level to the high school. Our students need to be reading. They need to be reading at a high level. They need to be interacting with others about what that reading is, what it's, so they can make the meaning of that and improve their own skills to read at a higher level. It's not really that fancy or exciting, but it's what creates the building to life for our students and where they want to go. So that when they get to high school, they can come to a place where they can graduate, pursue something that they want to do. Because for us, it's not just about the community, it's not just about graduating students in high school. It's about graduating students in high school so they can go on to do other things and get more education, so they can contribute to themselves, to make themselves successful, and to make our community successful, and wherever else they might go. It's a lot, but our folks are really, really focused on that. Finally, in the rationale that I provided to you all, we're talking about increasing academic rigor within our schools. Meaning, we want to make sure that our students are challenged, that they're challenged to a level where they can, they can go out and do anything they want to be able to on stage. And we're really trying to do everything we can to create a system that supports that. From data analysis, our administrators and teachers, to collaboration, to working together to make sure they use the best research strategies in the classroom. So tonight, as I lay out a local current expense, our board is taking the stance that the very best people, both at the classroom and supporting the educational process within our schools, is what is the primary focus to make a difference. And in your booklet, you have in front of you that local current expense request. And we, again, just like Mr. Evans said, we're trying to do the thing and attract the very best people to present to the public. I'll go through the list of things we're requesting. Again, this is a draft document that the government will be requiring for our boards to approve at their main meeting, and I talked to this myself. I'm not sure if you can see it on the board there, but we're going to increase supplements to match the state rate. We use three percent of the state rate. As you know, we do not have a state budget yet. It is not going to be approved by General Assembly or by the government. These numbers are almost a little bit impluses. So that's the number, we use the number three percent. Might be a little less, might be a little more, depends upon what your judge is. We're also asking for an increase in teacher supplement from ten to eleven percent for main competitive. Increase in school administrator's supplements for individuals at the school level and central office level, to try to get their number to eleven percent, math teacher pay. And then, I think a very important piece here is an increase in the classified supplement, to increase from three hundred dollars a year to thirteen hundred dollars. You see the number there, three hundred and ten thousand with that. And then, ten percent increase rate for a monthly supplement, you know, the others. Go to number two, salary increases. Again, we use the three percent number for a possible state raise for locally paid staff. That's individuals who will pay not our state funding, but local funding, be seventy thousand dollars. And then we're also looking at requesting a sort of a reconfiguring of our bus pay for our bus drivers, which will change the new rate to seventy to twenty dollars an hour, eleven percent average increase with a range of seventy to fourteen. And then, finally, increase operating costs. We've added some things that we believe with inflation of costs, with what we're watching very carefully for next year, obviously, just like the body of this, increase in utilities, three hundred thousand dollars for that area. Total budget request would be an increase of just over one point four million. Current funding from last year, ten million, six hundred seventy thousand, two hundred twenty-five thousand, for total of just over twelve million. I want to specifically note here that as we transitioned from last year, which is very a very strong house of order, the board commissioners were supporting that transition for us. There were a lot of amendments, and still were amendments that were worth the trees, but we're very appreciative of the score we received from commissioners to make that happen, to look on a financial perspective, and where we were going with that. Second piece of this is the draft capital request. And at your table, you have a lot of documentation regarding things that we feel like need to be fixed, changed, new items that can make our schools the best they can be in the capital perspective. Obviously, we want to make sure that our facilities are safe and secure. And then, secondly, we want to make sure that we always support, extend the life of our facilities. Make sure that things that we can use, not only today, but into the future, we try to make sure of that. And our maiden staff does a great job, with a limited budget, trying to make sure that happens, a great creature of that. So what I've laid out in this item, sort of some anticipated lottery projects, some local budget requests, over a hundred fifty thousand, some local budget requests are over a hundred fifty thousand. And the total request, not including lottery, but total request is over four point four million dollars. Certainly, you understand, we all have limited budgets, and just ask this to us in relation to trying to make sure we document what we think we need. And as Chairman Wiggins told me on so many different occasions about that, Kelvin, you have to ask. So by having the board's education, we're asking for that support. We understand, as Mr. Evans pointed out, there are limited resources, finite resources for things, and we are working very hard to try to make sure we chip away from that, and make sure that we do what we can do to provide the very best facilities possible for students in that community. And as you see on the request, there are a number of items on there that are big-ticket items, big-ticket items that make a big difference for our schools. From roofs to chillers, the bores, and some other items that are relevant for day-to-day operation at our schools. I will just mention this again, as we went back to last year, ESSR funding, which is provided through all school districts and in family, but to support during COVID, our school district conservatively took about roughly about twelve million dollars of that funding and invested that in facilities. Things like, again, chillers, cores, things that sort of the base schools were. And we worked, we worked really hard to keep our facilities open. Our facilities are aging, and we just want to make sure that we provide the best facility on the campus. Some final observations that I'll make as we conclude here. Federal and state funding are uncertain at this point. Part of that is just because of the process that we use, and when we have to go through or go through the budget part, we've got some plan, some planning law for state. We're supposed to get planning law for federal money. People expect, we still have not gotten that yet, so we're waiting now. So we don't know at this point exactly what that will look like on what the budget for General Assembly is not, not included here, the first year or two here by year. We're always looking to try to make sure we're efficient in what we do, school district. We want to make sure that we direct as much funding as possible to the classroom. And I think that, I believe that reflects the board's commitment in priority, have to find the very best people, both in the classroom and to support the education. Those things are very clean work for us as a school district, as a county, and as a community, to provide the best opportunities for our students possible. Because we want to teach them to read and do math and write, science and social studies and all the other great things they can study at their schools, and all the great opportunities they can go on to, both while they're adults with community college and beyond. But we also want to create opportunities for them to dream. Now, we dream, but fulfill that. Dreaming without the skill and knowledge to fulfill that dream, not when we fight crime. We strive for them to fulfill their dream because they have the skill, knowledge, and know-how and desire of being committed. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I try to keep it free with the presentation. The remarks documented, if you have any questions or thoughts.
My first question. I'm looking at the population graph, the town of Congress. I thought before we heard of the herd, that our people, the deaf people who have gone through this story, look at children, all that stuff. But like I'm trivia, I said that we don't have money here, and it comes to the school that was supposed to lock the hand. But then I should be out those two, all those schools, and I look at what we've done.
Our folks and their folks did this school, in some cases. They did go to, but when the children need to change, or the town, its life, especially the, we have, whether it's schools in life, just right now, or schools that we have in our system, sometimes the systems, children are all just the same, particularly with our, and we identify, we try to get a reason. We've had a process since I've been here, trying to identify and be proactive in what those things are, and these are what, these are things that we're prepared by, that we believe sometime soon, we're gonna have to address.
My next one, as I said, I think you all, I don't know why it is, but it seems like every year, coming to capital projects, I see Southwest.
I'm sorry, say that one more time.
Seems like every year when I look at capital projects, I see Southwest, not one, two, but three major things I see right here at one time, as if always a million dollars, okay? I don't see a single project for North Edgecombe High School on this whole list. Now, I know you're supposed to be doing something, but who talking about three years down the line? So I know there are some things at North Edgecombe High School that he can take care of, that should have been on this list.
Actually, a lot of them, there were several things every time in the past year and a half, each one of those.
But do we have to do all three of these major projects at Southwest in the same place?
No, I'm.
That was Edgecombe's track. Isn't that, isn't it?
Right, I agree. And what we tried to do, to balance the sixty-five million dollars that North Edgecombe was getting within their, each basement's up, and the needs that we have throughout the school district. Last year, I did have North Edgecombe's trap on that list. We presented that to you all. Because of the grant, we felt like we didn't want to double up funding for that. This past year, we also made a number of improvements based upon support, either we got local, we got the local sales tax from the county, or from capital projects, we got replacing DAB boxes in North Edgecombe, preparing some roof issues in North Edgecombe. A lot of things that we were trying to do. Other things that we were trying to do in reference to trying to meet the needs of the students there. It, it's not about ignoring anybody, it's just that other schools and districts are not, are not part of the sixty-five million dollar grant.
And we're standing there in twenty-five years.
Well, if you go back and look at the list from last year, there was a lot on there from North Death. I will also say that, as I said before, this is the draft document that our board is working on. And, um, I can, or they can, add anything to this, uh, that, that we can add. But don't want anybody to walk away from this meeting thinking that we're, we're North Death. Because that's not the case, because we're trying to make sure that we provide support there for the transition to double their size within the last year, because there really weren't any other opportunities for places to put students from East Rocky Mountain. The incubator, which, uh, Mr. Evans said, uh, very appropriately, is a great building. But there was no guarantee that any students or architects could send to any project at the incubator by the time we opened in August twenty twenty-four to welcome students from East Rocky Mountain. Uh, really the, the only choice that was there would put students in North Death. We tried to put things in place, uh, for various different parts of that building to try and make sure it was prepared for, um, for student schools rather than. There's more work to be done there. The only difference is, is that we received the grant of sixty-five million, which is going to be invested in North Death.
That's a sign from this, too, is my comment on this. Is that we're gonna build a new high school. Okay, now, I think we need to have limited requests as relates to what we're gonna have and how the new high school is gonna accommodate. What we need to put out there, and, and just another comment, we, we've got to remember that zero seven gave us these groups while we were in the process of, of, you know, seven gave us these groups. And I think that, and these requests also have to come to us, okay? So we have some control at times of where his money goes back.
But if the, uh, if the commissioners would like for us to put all those things on the request.
I think you got too much in all of it.
As you said, so me and so, so.
But, but as you stated, uh, it's all right to request. I think the school board is certain that. I'll try my order to ask.
I'll make sure.
Okay, okay. The order comes on the decision that we won't be holding. And that will be controlled by, and that is normally negotiated. Uh, in terms of our management staff, in terms of the council, through what, what we can give takes around our vision, is that correct?
That's correct.
So they don't get all this. But, but, but it's still.
And we, and we understand that.
It's still, and this, this is a profit. It's still very much in order. You sure don't get it in your ass.
North East Home Track is an illegal track, we can't use it anyway. It was built illegally. They don't have enough lanes, you can't have a track made there. Why put money in it when you can't use it? The parking lot within a year is going to be taken up because of the buildings. If I put three hundred thousand dollars out there, you're gonna have to take it right back up.
Which gives us a better, which gives, the discussion gives us a better understanding.
That's right.
Okay, the question to answer always the board, because it gives us a better understanding of, of why and why not.
But why would we have had an illegal track?
My question, that was my question, they don't, they didn't build with enough lanes. State Department, uh, Congress, that you cannot have a legal track made there because they didn't build with enough lanes. So it's an illegal track, that was before my time.
A lot of things were done without getting convinced and everything to happen, okay? We got, we got, how we get rid of this, something came before us about one of our citizens. That we got there, and then, so we can do it right.
That's right.
So, but I guess my point is, if we were going to, they didn't get things, and, uh, without getting approved, but the state probably didn't know what they were going to do there.
One last question. Um, over here, we're asking for the increase in the yearly local subsidy net for class five staff on three hundred dollars to thirteen hundred dollars. That's right. The first one. Thank you. How do you still want three hundred thirteen?
Number, uh, we thank our class five staff for that. I stand by that, and I'll say that to anybody who's. They, they, uh, pull very important jobs, uh, provide support for, for schools, uh, every day. Being at school day to the very end, through the, through the evening. And, uh, they do a lot of hard work and make sure our schools run efficiently. They're valuable to us.
Do you know what? And surrounding school systems, everybody is.
Uh, I can get, I can get that number for you and give a comparison. My, my, my thought would be that we're, we're very low. But I'll get the number later.
Another question, anybody, anybody that relates to, uh, the presentations that have been made?
I just got one question. And I was looking at utilities and the increase you put in here. Have you ever had the company to come in and look like, for example? At our church, we just went in and changed all the light bulbs to the new vision light bulbs. And they're claiming that's gonna save us nine hundred dollars on one. I mean, has the school system ever done anything like that, have you evaluated to see what we can do?
We're, we're actually having some conversations with people about that. We're looking at some energy efficiency models.
I would, I'd just like to make one comment, just a little comment. It's like the, when then the school board and council will be submerged, okay, and, and staff, that your system will be. Uh, thank you, kind of accepted that as a part, and he had to, he had to make that work. And I think, I think, I think that to me has been an excellent job. What I learned from the topic, absolutely. Starts from the top of the, the staff, board, and everybody involved in the process, uh, the community, preparing help, everything, in terms of the, they come forth and need to help. We've got to get a good plan, a plan action. It has, I had a conversation with him. I think it was just a little bit, God educated, that maybe on the process, the management board on the process.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, I, I just, as I conclude, uh, thank you for you all's support and the support of the great Board of Education. Got a great team, just, uh, I work with, that every day supports me. Great advisory groups from teachers to educators, parents that provide feedback to us and try to help us get better. And, uh, it's a pleasure, a wonderful heat, and, and Mr. Evans is a caring man, so thank you.
No, we, we, I think we, even when we disagree, as school board, you have to take that issue sometimes, you know? Okay, as a relationship, well, probably is, that's the role, that's, we got different roles to take. Uh, it was different. And we're gonna look at, yeah, if it gets through, uh, finance committee, uh, then we look at, okay? And, uh, we've got a good finance committee, okay? It's gonna look at something coming through our CTE. And we, we have, we, we will continue to do the best we can with our revenue that we have, support our school system, to meet it a more of a brand. Because I think we, we've got, we've got our entire county and our school system and, and I've always felt we got a good, good system, okay? And we've, we've always had this good thing. What, what has happened, we will allow ourselves to stay to us that we don't understand and accept the position. So any of us who did this county leadership, hey, the head of county, as Mr. Evans said, I am really motivated about the potential for where we're going. I am. And I think we're gonna have a county that people will move to. And they'll want their children into our systems, uh. I think that I was, I was very excited to see, uh, that's all in our school system, okay? So that is, that's gonna be very important. It's, it's the very little things that we're doing that our children and parents are not being used to, that make the difference. And this is kind of personal, I was gonna be today with a situation, this situation, maybe my family. And there was a lot young lady there, and I'm saying it just for public employees that was in this meeting. And a whole presentation with one, uh, and you can get it, we need to help. And that's what we are talking with the public, is not how we can present them. It's how can we help make this happen? With the source resources that we got, that should come out of all of us, when we're dealing with our communities. Let's make it happen for you within the resources that we have. And they were very helpful, very, this, this particular, is an excellent job. Helped me to understand, because you know, while we sit here, when I look, those things there, it's those of you that, that were going to use the other professionals that we have to go through, especially by the comfort spread, then areas of expertise. They know more about this than we do. Our staff knows how to run this system better than those of us that sit on this board. That's the way I feel about, okay? And when we listen to them, no, we've got the power of the first, okay? And that's our job, still the power of the first, but let's continue what we do. And I think we're doing it with them. We're going, we, we've got a good relationship with all of you, okay? And, and we're much of this, but, but the only reason we disagree is when it comes to the funders for it, and then it all we think that we can do. Because we've got the whole thing here, and that's the other all, the other eight, the other. Anybody else with any comments?
Sorry, I didn't.
Great.
Dr. Bryant, um, maybe, anyway, I continue to get complaints from, um, Martin Luther, my name, when, I don't know, when my children was, I don't remember that many parents picking their children up. But the traffic would be backed up the way off the walls of the street, coming on to Putnam. Putnam is a busy, busy street. There's words to live there, sometime I think it was a racetrack, because of the traffic. But, um, like, because of the way they park, there's nobody there to, to come out, got to go around these cars, you know, the wall that try to hit, no, the road is so busy, I can tell you. Cars coming, they're trying to cut around and get on the wall. I'm looking for a scare accident sometime, because there's nobody there. You tell these people, you know, nobody slowing down, that everybody's trying to go around. These are the car trying to get around that little carrier, go around and pick their children up. It's just, I just don't know what to do with it, but I continually, every school year, we get these complaints about what we're gonna do.
I tried to talk to a community member who lives here there last week, talked about some of those issues you have described. And, uh, I've been out kind of observing some things myself, and we're gonna involve some different people in a conversation about how we're trying to make that better.
It's gonna get worse this week if he's determined. That means I can't even come down this street, so cars will be parked in that side, and it will be parked on the day side. The school, the school's on term. And, and then you're gonna have children.
But certainly something, we'll have a conversation with town. We're at the school this week for spring break, but I understand the.
And, and if those kind of issues come to us as individual voice numbers, it's called a, sort of.
Well, I don't translate them, I am.
It's called superdilemma.
And you're always free to call the board members.
That's actually a town problem, and I have met at the town, I, I made a presentation at the town for that. I, I said it wrong, that's a town problem. I've, I've made, I've made a proposal, a presentation at town council about that. There was a guy who used to, there was a, a policeman who used to work at one, he did it free. After that, they said, they didn't do anything else.
Well, it, it is. I think it's something that could be worked out with town.
Well, it has been.
That, that, that can be worked out with the town. I, I think that can be worked out.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant, for making the presentation on behalf of the board.
Thank you, Ken. As Mr. Evans said, the momentum is real.
All of this momentum, if anything, has to come. How long, it's not gonna happen, either one of these boards. If there are any other business, we're talking. It's a public business, let me come on up. Come on. Is that just free? The question might not get answered.
She went to town, mom. I know it's time to talk, y'all.
Answer, that's your answer.
We painted the streets, uh, so cars not supposed to be beyond certain lines, so they're trying to avoid it, in fact, I need to bring a bind there, councilwoman for that area. And so, as you say, we did have police officers that used to work there, but we did paint the lines, try to help with that situation, I just don't know what we're gonna do.
Well, we, we, both of these boards are requesting a town trial for this.
I remember that drive around, they just talked, and said that food wasn't.
There are all types, there are all types. We can be, we can be, you can put one-way traffic that turn out, you can do, there are a whole lot of different things.
Cars and guards.
Right.
Well, I was, I was, I think we need to score off. Yeah, across the guard, across the guard, license and Jeff. I think we need to score off.
So you're talking to the right person, you're talking to the right person.
You're talking to the right person, and giving, giving your budget request on, on behalf of the safety of that community. Then let's, let's look at the school board, the city, and the county, looking at what we need to do to satisfy their needs. That's what we ask for.
Well, we had officers.
You had.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so.
And they said, they didn't want us there on the county property, so let's talk about that out of here. I'm willing to do the office, man, myself.
The school board and the county are in charge of our problems. So that's a, that's an issue we'll take care of. In terms of, we can't tell they sworn off, not to come on our front. Our attorney, our attorney and our administrative chair will go forward to resolve those issues. If those, if those are issues, we cannot deal with our own issue.
I'm telling you, that's what.
It made an issue out of that, so that's why they're not around.
If those are issues that this board, we have no knowledge, okay? And I'm saying, and I'm saying, let us get this done. If you will help us to be the issue. I mean, that's still a thought. I'm telling you, that's because they can practice the issue that we need to get these issues resolved. And the other community issue, we want to relieve the community as best we can. Very much so. And it appears to be a no pass, it is a simple, and it needs to be resolved.
Thank you for my own made. I'm the Councilwoman, Deborah Jordan.
You came in late, you recognized you earlier. Thank you, ma'am.
Charles do whatever he does.
Well, thank you, ma'am, thank you, thank you for glad you're here, that's right. Yeah, I really glad you. You didn't say it.
Hearing no other questions or concerns, we offer the opportunity for anyone to speak. I'm gonna call for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Has been moved and properly seconded that we will adjourn our joint meeting. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by same audit. Oppose the same signing. Hearing now, the meeting is adjourned.
Your vote is adjourned. All in favor, let me know by voting aye. Thank you, everybody. Thanks you, guys.